With Redbird, I talked with her last night. See, more to maybe. I don't know, Ron just want to take that one. And she got on the first court, she got on the first court, she could.
That's twenty-two.
She got on the first court, she could. I started bringing off some of those.
Okay.
First, like that, I know.
Pre-see D two and pre-see.
No, because we more told her all.
And.
Hey, this is a great.
I'm telling you.
Okay.
Why are you bringing your son back?
Well, yes.
That's last year's.
What you give me, sweetie?
That's the last years.
It was a separate.
Uh, that's the last year. Go ahead.
All right, it's ten oh five. Today's Tuesday, May the night. Uh, like, start this meeting off, I want to tell everybody that, uh. The, uh, I turned the air conditioner off so we can have a short meet. Air conditioner started leaking, drain pan filled up, so, uh. So, it's gonna be kind of warm in here this morning until we get the AC drain cleaned out. I'd like to ask Brother Danny to pay him a casey. Oh, I'm sorry.
Brother boy.
Brother boy.
Father in heaven, we call your precious name this morning. Thank you, Father, for life, health, and strength. Yeah, we thank you, O Lord, for this opportunity to even come together once again. Lord, Father God, we thank you. We pray that you just watch over everyone that's on the sound of my voice. We pray, Father God, that, that the officials make the, the decisions about the, the county that would be pleasing in your sight, as well as benefiting each and every citizen in this county. Lord, Father God, and we thank you for your Son, Jesus. Yeah, we thank you for the Holy Spirit. Yeah, we pray that the spirit of love be in each and every one of us so that we can go out, go by and do our daily duty. You're pleasing in your sight. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. All right, I'm gonna call the meeting order. Uh, we do have a quorum. Uh, we're gonna open it up for public hearing. Uh, we have David Kelly, he's asked to speak, but, you know, weigh it on the facts. And I have Jordan with Texas Department of Emergency Management. Would like to make a statement about the fire dangers that we're under right now. As usual. Yes.
Uh, I want to, uh.
If you would speak into microphone.
Okay. Uh, as you know, I'm a county lead science officer. I'll just, uh, he'll kind of put out there, you know, for next. The next ten to fourteen days, we're still in that critical fire weather. Historic right now, they're saying it's almost two thousand and one.
Yes.
So, to steal, you know, these fire fighters out here, pick a butt, doing what they can do. It's dangerous situation right now where, as I said, it's been, then it's ten to fourteen days. But the specific weather, I don't know, create a debate on burn rating, which, uh, it's so weak. Other than that, just make sure y'all check where else local fire departments and y'all's precincts and jurisdictions because everyone out there doing the work, keep it checked out. So, it's kind of what we need to talk about. I'll be forwarding to the Commissioner's, the District, the actual hall, I'll get him over there. For the fire weather, I'll reportedly just talk next to y'all. Just keep checking on your air, your fire departments. And know that, oh, God, I was dangerous just yet. But that's all I can say. We want to make a big comment.
Okay, thank you. With the, uh, with the drought, uh, we are under critical fire, uh, weather. Uh, there's very good chance that any fire that, that breaks out, the Forest Service will not be able to contain it. So, everybody just be careful and watch, watch your burner. Uh, we got the consent agenda, uh, need to approve the minutes from the previous meetings. And we have, uh, okay, okay, which, the minutes from the previous, which one? All of Banning, and so we need to approve, uh, the minutes from May into June.
Thank you for sending those down.
Thank you. Okay.
Motion to approve the minutes previous meeting.
Okay, motion is made by Commissioner Powell.
Second.
Second by Commissioner White. All in favor?
Uh.
All against? All right. Right now, we'll move on along, uh, with deliberate and consider action on the following items. Uh, item number one is discuss, and if appropriate, Karen Jones is requesting to waive penalties and interest uh, on some of her taxes. Basically, what has happened, uh, they had brought some property, uh, they had statement. On April seventh, twenty twenty-one, we closed on a property which we purchased from Gordon and Cammy, uh, last name, at Garland Smith House. This property lots four and five Rockaway Acres is on one D. And unbeknownst to us, one of the houses is on a separate house only account with the Newton County Tax Offices. Uh, that account number is sixty-four three ten. Garland Smith sent the proper paperwork to Marjorie Hearn's office, but the house only account was not changed to Redbird Acres. Um, in July of twenty twenty-two, we were contacted by Gordon Barnett after he received a notice of tax lien on the house on the account. And after researching many phone calls, um, between the appraisal district and, uh, Garland Smith, we figured out that the house only account and the area here analyzed with the Newton County Appraisal District. The appraisal district corrected the name on the account. You know, they, they waived their fees. Um, the appraisal district waives the fees, but, uh, you know, and I'm kind of scanning over his letter. Uh, and she assumed that both tax offices had waived the fees. And actually, just, just the appraisal district waives the fees because, um, our tax office does not have started to do it without Commissioner's Court approval. So, she's asking us to waive the fees and, fees and penalties, um, on twenty twenty-one, which, um, you know, it's since been corrected, the appraisal district waived their fees, and it was, it was an error made by the appraisal district. So, yes.
Jones wasn't aware that she owed anything until July. She received the July, the legal notes, kind of legal tax attorneys. She really thought she paid our taxes the same day she paid the appraisal district online. She paid the banks. It was her understanding, and it was just a miscommunication that when she was told all penalty and interest would be waived, that it included our office, and it didn't. We didn't know anything about it. Thank you.
So, she's asking since it was a county, it was the appraisal district, uh, area, if the county could waive her fees and interest. Yes.
There are two homes sitting on that property. There are two homes. So, she thought she paid everything. Yeah, there are two.
But they've since corrected the tax statement, so, uh, she owes fees and interest for twenty twenty-one.
Anyway, we can make the appraisal district. I'll make the motion that we waive the penalties and fees under circumstances.
All right, so, motion is made by Commissioner Powell. Second by Commissioner Fonda, all in favor?
Uh.
All against? All right. Item number two, uh, discussing of appropriate, uh, BIS Consultants is, uh, they're gonna, they're gonna do a presentation on their, their IT services, uh, they want to provide for Newton County. And, uh, you know, they have a, like a sample contract that, that that they brought out force. And, uh, I got Mr. Mark Wise here from BIS. Good morning.
I'll start with, I don't know if everyone knows who BIS is, that they are starting appraisal district area, uh, doing IT service. You're sort of have this like, they're going sixty here now. Uh, everything we do is focused. So, when it comes to maintaining your computers, uh, we don't limit your hours, you're having to call, right? Unlimited call balls, we don't be, we'll look in that a little bit. Uh, if you look at the contract, it does say eight to five, right? There is an eight to five normal hour of certain monitoring things. On top of, we want to prevent stuff from happening, we also want to, not just reactive, but proactive. So, we monitor yourself, we monitor, maintain all your antivirus and things. In your contract, we keep on top of it. And then we also have someone that's on call, that's usually on call up until ten o'clock at night if you'll have emergency. So, uh, for proactive. So, anyway, uh, that will add it to manage all your, all your computers counting by. On top of that, we also manage all your, we just patching, security, patching everything like that, and keep everything up to date. Uh, so, it's not just pick up on calls. We're here to, we're here to help you stay up to date and secure our angles. So, uh. That is, that's pretty much it when it comes to the IT maintenance side of things. Uh, do you have any questions?
Yeah, say we have a problem on site, uh, your, your hourly rates, uh, say if you have to come on site, and what kind of response time are we looking at?
Depending on the criteria. If it's just a project that you're needing to knock out, you need a PC installed, or move something around, schedule that out. If you are downed out. A couple guys spread throughout Texas, so my closest technician to have to y'all is, uh, I think it's just north of Houston. There's about a little over two hours away. Uh, so, we have a critical moment, we get the call, we try to get here with this one. Projects scheduled out as needed around, through schedule around the part of our requirements. Our, our going rate per hour in the rate, uh, is about two twenty-five an hour. Uh, can they get a project or something like that? We, we put that out ahead of time. Is that what we're looking at?
Okay.
Do you charge two twenty-five for two hour travel time?
No, sir. We'll charge two twenty-five an hour. Uh, we don't generate charge and travel time to come out here.
So, you won't have any, uh, critical support at the ten PM you done?
In our contracts, our support stops. We stop monitoring for alerts and things like that and call around ten PM until seven AM. But we have been known to answer our phones all the time. Uh, a lot of my clients have them on personal cell phones, so on top of our on-call, on-call, there's other avenues to get a hold of us as well.
We got like our Sheriff, uh, G A's office and, uh, J P's office, uh, anybody who works on computers, uh, has to be C G S certified.
So, we are not currently C G S certified. I did, I mean, that is on our list, I think we do. We are coming across more and more clients, uh, that are on our. We're heavily into the, uh, the appraisal district tax office side. We have some county clients. But, so, as we, as we roll forward, things to do, I just don't have a timeline.
Okay, cool. Thank you for your, uh, oh, and, uh, it's, uh, you know, I don't think it's anything we have to take any, uh, uh, action on today. Uh, it's just something we, we, we need to look at.
Feel free to look it over. Reach out to me if you have any questions. Uh, I look like this is part of the list. Rosemary behind me. So, we may need to give you a call.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, Judge, are we currently in agreement with Texas Computers Associates? We have a contract, what's the status?
Yes, we, we do have a, a contract with T C A.
Okay.
So, uh, I know we pay a monthly fee, uh, to them.
It's only, yeah.
Yeah, well, uh, the contracts for backup only, you know, we pay uh, an hourly rate after the sixteen hours have been met. Yeah, that's where no contract, no contract after the sixteen hours.
Did we go out, are we going out for a contract? I'm just a little bit confused, but.
I mean, that's, that's something we're, uh, we're gonna have to do, uh, since it, it exceeds the fifty thousand. But it's something we're gonna have to look at going in, going out for an IT services contract.
I was gonna just state that this was, I think, some of the lack was having support for your computer level versus the, they're, they're providing mostly through the networks, things like that. So, this was, this was right the gap of what was missing for your day-to-day and technical areas. We can look into, we shift that direction back, and look into taking over all, all services. That's what, at least get a sense, and we can see your network, see how our thing works, work on the other, the other options, I'll take over the therapy.
All right. I, I guess I'm just confused. Did we, we asked for this today, or is this something we, we contacted this company that they contacted?
They come in and, and they wanted to give us a proposal.
Okay.
So, this was last, I think we just started talks, um, like, like, last Thursday or something. Mark at the initial conversation. So, very, very new.
Received presentation from Brandon Rose with Purple Ways Auction.
Hi, good morning, Judge, commissioners. Uh, as he said, my name's Brandon Rose. I'm with Purple Wave Auction. We are an online equipment auction, specializes in heavy equipment, trucks and trailers, agricultural equipment, and government surplus. Uh, I'm just here today to give y'all some information, which y'all have a little packet there in front of you, you can look through and take it with you. And, uh, since I'm by, uh, Danny out there to keep this short and sweet, so, how we work is we come to you, we take the pictures, we take the video. Uh, we market for assets out to the world. Uh, we have an engaged bidder audience, and it stays with us every week. We run auctions Tuesday through Thursday. Uh, we do two government surplus auctions a month, uh, second Tuesday, fourth Tuesday. We actually have one that's closing starting next. Uh, I have a flyer in there, you can see, for one we have coming up in the near future. Uh, we are a no reserve auction, so we do sell to the highest bidder, but, uh, having that engaged bidding audience, uh, we, we rarely see anything go for best, what I would get on that open market, this is a market out. Uh, we do not typically charge our government clients to our services. So, we come to you again, we do pictures, we do video, we do marketing, and we waive our listing fees for government. Uh, that's kind of the, the gist of it. Um, I understand y'all may have some things out there that y'all are considering, especially coming into the new budget year. Might need to free up some, uh, some funds for other projects or other equipment. So, I am also available and have my cell phone on, are there, so feel free to reach out. Uh, and I do live here, live in the China area of West Johnson County, so fairly, uh, quick little ride up, but that's it. If you have any questions, I'm available to answer them now in an open court. Uh, if you'd like to engage individually, I can do that as well. I don't want to get you in trouble with open meetings at, and a walking forum, but do appreciate Judge and Commissioner White stopping by our booth there in Galveston. And I believe we met some of y'all at a DEP COG event a few months back, and we'll be at the Texas Association of Counties here end of the month. So, we'll be available then, so.
Thank you. So, I, uh, my one question is, you know, even with a no reserve, uh, equipment using sales for the value.
Right, so, so the no reserve, yes, it's gonna sell typically for a market suite to that setting, like any auction would. Um, if you have, if you have a truck miles on it, it's probably gonna break whatever, point fifty would happen, this is gonna break. If you have a newer vehicle, newer piece of equipment, low hours, uh, good maintenance, which is typically what happens with county equipment, um, it's, it's gonna drive that, that value. Our, our bidders are gonna see that, they're gonna call you, they're gonna ask questions about it, but it is gonna bring what it would bring if you tried to actually bring more than if you tried to trade it. Uh, because usually our, our dealers that are on our site as well, uh, they're, they're in there trying to bid on things and get it lower so that they can turn around and, you know, make a profit off of it. Uh, we do have an appraisal service that's in-house as well, so if you have something that you're kind of questioning, what, what you think it might bring, um, we'll come out, we'll take pictures, uh, get some basic information, I'll, uh, run it through those guys, and they'll tell us, uh, within a reasonable degree of certain what we think it would generate.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I'm sorry, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, item number four. Okay, so if you want to just, item number four is, uh, approved payment system agreement for credit card payments to the Net Data website for just the pieces one, two, three, and four. And, um, basically, uh, I three has bought out Net Data. So, um, I, from my understanding, there's different credit card payments amongst the J Ps. I know the tax office uses these services.
Well, it's the same certified payments. And, uh, so that was just Robert Morris, we saw that over at the I three, and so we were just checking into it, and they just wanted to send the contract out, would they charge more payments to individuals?
So, do y'all, would y'all rather stay with what you got than?
It's like a three percent. Seven five is the first person.
Yes. Okay, so basically, y'all, y'all don't want to go with this. So, I would say we take no, uh, action on item number four. All right, item number five, discussing of appropriate, approved CJ I S security addendum between Newton County and I three Bearcat LLC, uh, Net Data with, with Sheriff.
Good morning.
Morning.
I got a, this is a, uh, uh, very, uh, system. I would allow the, uh, J P's being to do their work from the jails, uh, uh, previously had, so they do their work in the jail. In their office, when it comes to deal of offenders, you know, uh, when they come to the rain, they fall down in the jail. I don't know if you do whether it's all, you know. This will allow that to happen.
Okay. Okay, so, it's, it's good for you and it's J P's.
Yeah, I think there'll be, I think there'll be a lot of, something, something I will sign.
Yes, all right. So, yeah, it's, it's for you to sign.
So, that is just, uh, it's just added on to our Net Data system. It's just another tool in the box, right? I'm making my.
The J P is done, I've seen, uh, paying it off a lot of times. And, uh, I, I, and they, they don't, you know, um, I don't know about, I see what they're doing, and I appreciate it.
Well, it's, it's, I, it's not a different contract, right? Sheriff, this is just the same Net Data, just a mix upgrade with the same stuff that we're already doing, right?
And to my understand, yeah, and to my understanding, uh, President, that is upgraded down the road. It's just, it will be taken over, uh, by someone else.
Well, it's just basically wired in. I mean, it's just tapped into y'all, right? Okay.
So, basically, there's gonna be some changes, you know, with I three, uh, purchasing that data, so, um, I guess eventually, instead of that data, we'll be using I three. So, um, motion.
Can we get, what you? How cost associated with this upgrade?
It's just in, in with the contract they signed last year.
So, it's not like a better service, right? I mean, it's just, they're constantly updating, right?
Yes.
Since we're already, since we're already with, with them already, so they're just, they just, somebody bought them out with some new, with a new, uh, tool, right? Basically, okay.
You're not upgrading, you bought one out.
Absolutely, absolutely, absolutely.
Go ahead.
Well, and, uh, I can't, and please don't pass, but I'm sure it's, it's, like I said, one thing about upgrades, upgrades, you have to keep moving on. It's always changing, technology is always changing, and that's why it's always, uh, they are so we can build an ongoing grip, uh, of people out there. I just took my C G S training again, my time to do the training, and you describe, I just, I share the difference, uh, things come up, uh, people trying to act, it's just personal activities.
So, the these people listed here, thirteen Bearcat LLC, those are people that we've done thing, we've done work with in the past, we have a contract with, it's not a new, no, new group? Just a question.
My understanding is it's not a new group, same, uh.
Same company. Same company, just different name.
Courtney, you listening to all this? What you? We're good?
Things we included in the service, sorry for having.
Is it?
You said. First thing we got was a contract. But it doesn't sort of. So it's not a common.
Yes, ma'am. So we have a motion by. Commissioner, second by Commissioner White on a, on approving the addendum. All in favor? All against? Okay, item number six, receive update on the status of Newton County jail equipment and facility surveillance system. Computer.
Listen, George.
Yes, sir. Hey, and I, this is the addendum for you to sign.
Okay. Give you this text and one and I'll work. Sir, Commissioner, I have, I have sent this off to you. Your memo, it's the same information. Long back, we had. We had a offender come in to look at our security surveillance system here in court and county offices. We have cameras in the jail as well. And the cameras in the jail are pretty, pretty old. And they looked at what we had and what we need to be. Safe, make, make, safer for. All of us here in the county who work in a building. And they came up with those books and it's broken down from the jail. Broken down, so we have down the door. There's also the panic alarm. Whereas when you hit it, it will give you a alarm where the panic is at. Right now, we get an alarm of a panic and we don't know where's that. So that does. That, that system. Will be able to put a camera in the courtroom to be able to watch. The video and audio, bring it alive. And also be important to put out down there. So I just want to make. Back to you, if we have done this. Come up with what we need, identify what we need and how much it costs. Also, I wanted to bring out that. Our computers. And dispatch and call them. Computer, maybe dispatch. That. That's all I'm saying, completely done. We can just say. A radio company coming here to put a bandaid over that gunshot. And you know how long? With the jail. Which we keep pretty cool. Everything, we'll do that though, not just. The, the automatic door locking mechanism. It is still. It is still. And for that is something that we have to identify to work with. Find out where they are failing. And, and the guy who came in and worked on told us it was no part of it.
At least.
Moving forward. Radio communications. Some of you, you know, I was in pursuit. And. Radio system. Some two fifty-five in the east. And the radio system up there. I didn't need to tell them, I reached out and I didn't signal one. I would talk to dispatch that for a while. And I moved down the road at a higher rate of speed. So it is. And it's something that we've been dealing with for a while. We're, we're trying to work forward on that. So as you see, we have a mirror issue that we have identified that we feel is very serious. We weren't before.
So the, the total price for the courthouse security and, and, and rest of the offices for the cameras and the panic buttons. What would be the total cost?
Total cost for that to back over, I think it's around eleven thousand. And the. About nine thousand. And the total cost for a new cat system, lease period would be about twelve. You get a lease of twelve, twelve thousand five hundred for about three years. Then at the end of that period, you can find a system. And move forward and test for maintenance. And or you can get a refresh. So that's something that you have options. There that have.
All right, now.
Bottom line. We're doing about a vision. Was doing it. I talked to y'all a while ago. On that, on the surveillance system. I don't think that, yeah, you're just off the top of my head and some of you worked before we got them coming in before. Price is just about ninety. Do you know? I know I would feel a lot better being to have island panic system. And fledged that works a hundred percent of the way it's designed and keep. I know.
As far as radio communications. You know, you would need a tower, North County, South County and repeater systems.
There's a couple options. If you're a test stand, stand up still, we, there's a quick fix, we're trying to work on one. Further in the big, big people. But you know, we all know that the power of a, a solution to our problem.
Just to make a comment quick. Ready to park. So the DEPCO, one of our trans judges, I think you should know this, that there's seven towers that are approved. Ready to go on their way towards the state. The T M R state, one of them should lease that part of the town. Once that name of seven counties, I think, had, the previous judge did sign the contract, but we'll get one.
Yeah, we will get one of those towers.
Uh, but I will say the fire on two fifty-five, this, it was dangerous, I don't say how dangerous it was, the force service, they can. Testify this, the force service could not communicate to their dispatch off their radio. The phone service, they barely had communication, I could barely talk to the state operations center during that time, this phone service. It, it was a day, I'm just going to say, it was real dangerous, they, the channel B fire twenty-one didn't work, but the main primary to get. Talk to the sheriff's office or, or the force service to talk to the local. Was, was in our, it was a, a standard, you already know this.
Yes.
But we do have one tower that is, I mean, we could reach out to that hog on that, but I think.
Isn't that tower for the South County? Isn't that south tower dedicated to South County?
From the DEPCO?
Did they put the tower?
They're trying. I can't make comment, but they're trying, I know he's on the board, so he has more of a. Stay on that, like, you know, kind of win what could ask the rest of the DEPCO, because last time I talked to Mike about our issue in the county. Because I mean, I, I, from a first management point, y'all standpoint, Judge, you can agree, is the radio system is a dangerous issue. Especially when you don't have a phone service, some eighty-five percent of the county in certain places.
There is no phone service.
Yeah, the, yeah, we know we had issues with Roz in the last couple of things, I, I did reach out to the state operations center, the, the. Have the communication coordinator, reached out to Roz and they did fix, there was a problem in the backlog. Or something like that, and they did fix that, but I mean, we know. We have at least one, I think we need to really work on, maybe secondary, and also. Radio is all together, there's a note FEMA, their grants coming out. I think it's October first, that, that grant from Old Rollup. Comes out, we might be looking to do it, work with you, Judge, and maybe our recovery mitigation team see.
So our north end tower is completely down?
From, is that the Burtville one?
No, it's two fifty-five.
Two fifty-five, uh, the only thing that goes out on that is the B far, or twenty-one.
We checked on it, so has anybody went and checked on it, make sure the fuse is still, make sure it's all.
That'd be a judge question.
Anybody been up there to put their eyes on? You was right in the middle of it up there the other day.
I don't, I don't know about that, I know. That's a judge thing, I can't.
Uh, you have not, I have not, we need to.
We do need to check on it, that's what I'm saying, but.
Then let me and you go look at it. Like the sheriff said. Have you been to it, Sheriff? Okay.
I, you know, it's sad, you know, we go to the. We don't expect to get a lot of radio communication and/or cell service. That was one time I was leaving bed and I know my office was trying to get in touch with me. I had to drive down to Burtville so I can get the signal to find out what was going on.
What we did with that up there on the north end of county all the time, is, is hit and miss, anybody that lives up there knows.
We even the city police department, you know, they have their own, they're having issues too. And they're, they're saying the same thing the sheriff's saying that we got to. We just try to identify this.
And there's no way to tap onto the S R A up there, there's no way to.
That would be an S R A question to ask this.
Yeah, they have.
And I know, if I'm correct, DEPCO is in charge of radio communications, so that's what I was told, so. Probably need to reach out to Mike.
Well, they're, they're in charge of working on the grants with DEPCO, getting, trying to get more towers and they did, they got seven towers.
The power should be able to communicate to those seven that get it, that's what I was being told, but I don't know exactly, but.
Maybe Asper County is getting another tower, Roganville area. So that should help us out, you know, we, you know, put a repeater on it.
There's no add-on to put on our cars satellite wise to make our cell phones work?
We're trying to work on first hand. Working on the issue right now. What's how a first should have phone.
So it'll be more for the first sponsors, but it's a device that goes on, I reached out to pasture foods, y'all. Coordinator, and I worked with the judge and the sheriff, sheriff rode with, got to talk to him, I was out of town, just out of town. I was deployed to power, but it's going to be like, kind of like a satellite dish that sits on the vehicle. And what it does is pulls from the towers from further distance, so like the, this tower that's actually working in orange, it'll pull from that and bring it over here. It's basically creates a bubble, but the problem is, it's a lot, it's the satellite plus the router and this other material that goes in it, but that's only priced for his eighteen vehicles. If the judge wants to be able to talk to the fire department, she would also need to include that, but not everybody in the fire departments are on first hand.
Well, my problem is, we've been talking about that ever since I've been here, we've been talking about no communication from one end of this county to the other, we've been talking about a broken down jail system. And we've been talking about everything. Guess what? We might, we're still talking about it. There is so much advanced technology out there, there's no reason in the world for us to be sitting here. We want arms, and that's what we're doing.
I, I do know that when Olaveen was here, we found that he, he was looking for a quote for, to build a tower. But then that was right when the transition.
We have a tower up there, let's go buy some equipment and put on it.
I was talking about on the south side too, the south side, they supposedly condemned, so that one needs to.
Tower down South County is.
It is condemned, but. It's still standing there though.
Yeah.
Okay, I made a comment the other day, let's go rent a crane. Instead of the crane up there and get a man basket, let's go to the top of it, let's fix it until we can do something different. We're just sitting around talking about it's condemned, we can't do this and we can't do that. There's multiple, multiple answers out there. Okay? Nobody says we can't use that tower. All they're saying is you can't climb that tower.
It all comes down to the little rectangle green.
I understand, but when you come to this, to the public safety and the people, and our people of our county, we're sitting up here making excuses why we can't move forward. They ain't a soul out there going to buy into that. Not one of us, not even me.
They don't want to hear.
They don't, that's right. So Sheriff. Sheriff, question, you mentioned ninety thousand dollars for today. Step to the court and inside the jail as well?
That's the whole thing.
That's the whole thing.
And then that was a couple four thousand.
And then twelve thousand for the CAD update? And then what about the locks, you mentioned the locks, it's probably got my ears going more than anything else.
Well, eventually they will fail.
So what happens when they fail, just to kind of put it in perspective, it's, I mean, was somebody not locked in jail?
What happened, they all on.
Or would they just walk out, I mean, seriously, if it fails, does that mean the cell doors are not locked, is that what that means, so a jailer could be directly?
Good, yes, that's good. So. I did sort of bring it out, like I said, I, you know, I know these are complicated things, we need to, you probably have more questions.
Will, will any of our doors out at the facility work here? No idea, probably old too, most likely.
Probably, probably not that, that old.
Right.
I am not familiar with the way that they are set up. Everything, I don't even know, did we have, you know, given them work out there?
Yes, yes. Yes. So what do you need from the court today? To get the doors in the jail working? And build some sort of, hey, they're not going to fail, we're not going to have a jailer, somebody pushing the door open, the jailer on the other side of it.
Well, only thing, I'm just letting you know that those, they are failing. No part. So, yes.
So is a, a complete door replacement or just a complete lock replacement?
It is a, the system itself.
So come to your, so come to your dispatcher's office as well, so you would have to go from door to computer, right? You have to tell us, we don't, we're not, not a big, we don't go down there, don't get locked up very much. I guess that's, that's where I'm at with it. What can, I'm sitting here.
Need to do is go out for big heads.
Do you have a mechanic that could just? Back up here and maybe the, let's go out there, let's see what we got out there. Fix it, I don't think you want to just say fix it, but I think. I'm going to say, you want a jailer, if you got inmates that have the potential to push the door and be in face-to-face contact with the jailer, we need to fix it. I didn't mean it like that, but I say, we need to, if, if there's something out there, we got. I mean, maybe the second phase of that thing out there. Is, but I know that if you're going to have to have the computer system to go with it, then I would say that is a no. Are you talking about out there or here? No, out there. I'm talking, you're talking about the, no, I'm talking about if there're parts out there. Oh, okay, okay, I'm with you.
If there's parts available to.
Yeah, I go back to this, if, if we're sitting here today and Sheriff's telling them, I said, that's the most disturbing thing, I mean, the tower's been that way for years, we've been talking about it, doing nothing, got it? But the locks on the jail, I mean, you have people in there that are bad people.
You know, the mechanic tells us that the system is. Failed. That he didn't say when, just said that they're.
It's the same thing with a wore-out tire, I can tell you it's going to blow out, but I can't, I don't know when it's going to. We get, so I'm like, let's fix it.
I have.
Sheriff.
Got a question, sir. We've got what, one more year on wait list, we'll go out for a new bond issue on the jail? Isn't it thirty-year wait?
Three.
So we got one more year left?
Does it been that long? I'm trying to find.
Yeah, I'm just saying, we need to really push, we got a year, we need to let people really know, we need this bond issue to pass for a new jet.
Well, you know, I feel my part of a lot of folks know exactly what we're up to. You know, three hundred, three forty, so you can two of us get a hand base. Uh, and they will be going up five dollars for inmate next, uh, sorry, you may learn. I wish not to, not that, that five dollars, forty five dollars for a inmate. So, but the, the thing is, they're, they're maxing out. You know?
Do you have any money in your budget to repair them? Is there any money in your budget to repair them? Have you got any money left over to repair?
Repair this?
The jail?
I don't have, we're talking about the doors.
Yeah.
I don't have a cost on them. I have to do a cost. We paid a, mentioned it. Sorry. Where the other come out? Alright. Alright, thank you.
Great. Judge, I just say this, as a member of the court, so today we've been given some pretty disturbing news from the sheriff. I don't think we should just move forward without some sort of, some sort of action plan being agreed upon here when we leave here today. I mean, we, we, somebody needs to take it. If it's you, that's great, but somebody needs to get the cost and, and get all the details, come back to court and say, we need ten dollars first to fix it all, whatever.
I think we need to authorize a request, be it's to repair the.
I can hit uh, give you a, 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 oh, no, please. Give a change of, of, the, 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 the ability.
So we need to get started on that right away. We can't wait till the next court.
Yeah, yes.
Making a court, we probably need to. Get all those things together and have a special so we can approve to go out for bids if that's the direction we're gonna go.
So. Yes, so we need to check and see if parts are available. Get bids on what it's gonna cost or, you know, get an estimate of what it's gonna cost or what it's gonna take to fix the locks on the jail. And then bring it forth, the next special, and then put in a request to go out for bids for repair on it.
Okay.
So, is everybody in agreement with that? So. So, and that's, that's what.
We don't have a contract already in place for maintenance on our jail? No, we do not. Okay.
So the jail was built in early seventies, right? What year?
Eighty two.
Eighty two. It's newer than what I thought. Oh. About a couple of years, so, so we're looking at.
But don't say how old it is.
So we're looking at obsolete parts, so uh, so I guess that's our plan forward is to, you know, cause uh, sheriff probably gave us an update, so our plan moving forward is to, you know, get estimates and see if parts available and then go out on the next uh, special for, for requests for bids to repair. Alright. Item number seven is discuss imposition of op. Yeah. Imposition of optional fees for county year twenty twenty four for the Texas Department of Motor Vehicles. Oh, well, we didn't need to vote on it last. Oh, well, I guess we do need to vote on it. I just thought we made a recommendation to.
Recommendation, oh, we should do it.
Do we need a motion on that one court?
Okay.
Alright, alright, now, this one is uh, discuss imposition of optional fees for county year twenty twenty four with Texas Department of Motor Vehicles. Uh, this is the fees that, uh, you know, we have two options. Option A is no change, the county will charge the same fees in uh, year twenty twenty four. Or option B, you know, we could uh, we can add some additional fees on to the uh, ten dollars. You know, we have the uh, the county road and bridge fee, which is ten dollars. You know, we have a child safety fee that we can increase to the dollar fifty. It must be used for school crossing guard services. You know, my recommendation, I would say would be option A, no change to the county fees.
I think it's, is that in this packet? Was that in the mess? Was that in us today's agenda packet?
Yes. What's that under? I've got everything here. I just. I don't remember. Play the top of. So does anybody have any questions on item number seven?
Say it, David, something?
Yes.
I'll make the move.
Motion's made to, so leave it the same as twenty twenty three? Motion, motion made by Commissioner, I'll be second by Commissioner Benson, all in favor? All against?
Abstain, Judge. I ain't some information all up.
Okay. Alright, item number eight, discussing of appropriate accept donation from G T M gas transmission pipeline in the amount of seventy five hundred for the bomber, volunteer fire department, and that's Hard West.
About a year and a half ago, we did bring it from the midstream transmission company. They, they wanted it to us and somehow the address just got all, they sent it to us last, they sent it back. Finally got a grant. It goes to actually all the fire departments in deep county, the fire chiefs that we believe that to use it to bomber. So, we're actually on a code check, seven dollars about a thousand. And we can go back every six months and get this grant again for fire.
So we've already received this money?
Yes. We've been working at it again because Rosemary.
What happened? They were sending it to an address. Uh, auditor's office that wasn't there, so that, we've been looking for the check for almost a year now. Okay.
Yeah.
But we have it now.
We finally have the check. Correct.
Yeah, I haven't already voted to receive it. It's right here on.
But this, this week, we, we have it every six months. If we go back to the platform. Okay. The lady didn't want me to apply for it again, so we got it. It's right with the first check.
Okay.
Well, we got the address changed.
Yes, the address changed. Uh, we've got it changed. Uh, I'm into the judge. Well, they sent it uh, two or three times. But I wanted to hold on to it for one.
No.
Thank you.
And so, will I make a motion?
I said, alright, motion's made by Commissioner Bobby, second by Commissioner Benson, all in favor?
Ah.
All against?
Monday, the gas pipeline people be here to present the check.
Okay. No, 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 don't run off.
You, you're next. Alright, item number nine, discuss and. Item number nine is discussing if appropriate, authorize Howard West has granted administrator for G E M transmission pipeline to apply for donations through Newton County.
He's the one always doing it anyway. We get everybody else's name off of it, right, Mr. West?
Everybody but Rosemary, whoever they, they may let you appear. Uh, we need to leave that address on us so we don't get it confused and people back.
Like I said, every six months he can apply for this and he can go for different things, right?
Yes, sir. Uh, the next one I've discussed with the fire chiefs is buying A Ds. Uh, we can buy six A Ds with the money. New fire department has no A Ds, firewear department has no A Ds. Uh, the sheriff, I think somebody is part of the five A Ds. It's part of personal scene and most of our, our calls. They have an A D that costs them six to buy. But we can get this grant for A Ds and then pass them out in the county where we have six or seven more A D out in the public. They have to save lives. But every six months we let it come up with something or somebody that needs the money and, and go by their is, they have a list out there.
Yeah, I mean, I make that motion, cause I think that's man we need to do with it.
Yep.
I second.
Alright, motion's made by Commissioner Benson, second by Commissioner White, all in favor?
Ah.
All against?
Got your new job, Har.
Thank you, Har.
Hey, Mr. West, before you run off, thank you for everything you do. You know, you're just around.
Thank you, Har.
I don't wanna lose that paperwork.
Okay. Alright. Out of number ten, we're just gonna uh, take no action on it. It was to uh, give some old fuel tanks at precinct two, born to uh, at old born to the Burtville I S D, but the tanks are so old that they cannot accept them. So we're just gonna take no action on this one. Item number eleven, discussing approve of, uh, of appropriate approved purchase of twenty twenty three John Deere's sixty one, zero, six one oh five, four by four boom mower and the financing, First National Bank, uh, financing for Danny Benson.
Well, we all know, we, it's mowing season and one of mine blew up, you know, the other one's got a lot of wear to it. I talked to Sheriff Mr. Moore. And she said I could get it financed. I talked to Mr. Bang here and he gave, he's on the uh, Bible. Now I got three quotes and he's cheap going out of them all anyway, and then it'd be coming out of my budget in five notes. Five years, five notes.
Total cost? What's the note for?
I think one hundred and seventy two thousand, if I remember right.
Yes, for, for five years.
Your, your, your budget sustainable enough to sustain it?
Good.
It. I'm just asking.
More. What?
Your budget?
I mean, yeah, I won't have to do it. I mean, otherwise I'm gonna be buying.
I understand. I got mine broke down too. I get it.
Yeah.
I threw all the pieces down.
That one broke down and.
I got my strode all over shop after.
Gotta have it.
So. We, that money. I like the book.
You make it?
I second.
Alright, motion's made by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Powell, all in favor?
Ah.
All against? Alright, item number twelve, discuss notice of purchase of dump trailer for precinct one pending auditor approval of funds available. And that's Danny again.
Again, I, I, I'm looking at a dump trailer and uh, well, I know we got the breed truck, but, but I can use my dump trailer digging out ditches and stuff.
We are only.
You know, I've got some money in my budget I can transfer around and get it.
I second.
Alright, who made the motion?
Appreciate it.
Alright.
Why didn't I make a motion? Motion.
Motion, I'm, I'm gonna quit you as making the motions.
The what? Fourteen thousand, four hundred. A sixteen foot dump trailer.
Can we, oh, boss, just for the general public's input, you know, when you talk about spending fourteen thousand dollars for a dump trailer, it don't take very many loads to pay for that trailer and savings cost for diesel. I, I know Mr. Kelly's, I, those numbers sound, I just wanna share. I would love to be able to buy one and, and a truck to go with it. I think that that's frugal, mindful uh, investment of taxpayers' dollars, so.
I need one too.
Yeah, I want one too.
Yeah, I'm gonna have to borrow Danics. So, uh, motion's made by Commissioner Fumpby. Second. Second by Commissioner White, all in favor?
Ah.
All against? Alright, moving down to.
Hey, when you mentioned, y'all gonna have to borrow, uh, borrow Danics, I will say this. Mr. Benson, starting to call you Richard, has hauled several yards of rock, the Deweyville yard, since I've been in the office. Uh, only thing I've ever done is ball this diesel, so he helps the county, as do the others, you know, moving the equipment around, so they do that. I just wanted to. A, a, a lot of people don't know that out there and some people.
I was just joking.
Yeah, I just wanted people to know.
Alright, uh, item number thirteen, discussing of appropriate certified the twenty twenty three appraisal role for Newton County Commissioners Court, Ms. Melissa Burks.
Need it. We'll go on to Lattle Road. Our total praise value, three billion, nine billion, eight hundred, ninety thousand, two hundred seventy nine. Total assessed value, value, one billion, nine hundred fifty three million, four hundred four thousand, five hundred fifty six. Our total taxable value is one billion, three hundred eighty four million, four hundred sixty four thousand, three hundred. Our total price value of new property, four thousand four hundred forty two million, two hundred four three four thousand, five hundred fourteen. Our total taxable value of new property, nineteen million, two hundred eighty one thousand, six hundred and sixty. Any questions? I have three originals or purchases. One remain, one of our, uh, coming far.
You got this new property? That's.
That is new property that is.
Outside.
That did not exist.
I'll pay, you can grow that next year now.
But it's a reality. It is what it is.
Yeah, exactly. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, we're, we're putting in, on average, probably two covert a week.
Late growing. Yeah.
No questions?
Well, I mean, a lot, a lot of care now.
Put your own, your own, the next one, please. Yeah, there's two of these y'all. All right, I need a motion to approve.
I make a motion that we certify the twenty twenty-three appraisal bonus tax.
I second. All right, motion made by Commissioner White. Second by Commissioner Benson, all in favor?
Aha.
All against? All right. Item number fourteen. Discussing of appropriate certify anticipated collection rate for tax year twenty twenty-three.
Certification of anticipated collection rate for twenty twenty-three. I'm on the subarcs taxes that's applied. If you're not certified to the Newton County. And anticipated collection rate. One hundred and one shit past year twenty twenty-three. They did it eight thousand dollars. Having said that, I've been more. I'm really excited. In. In calculating this rate, I have given you all years. And she used current length and all the. And we're at a four.
Which is actually really good.
But I'm also down on the calculations. It's a three-year look back. So last year was a hundred and fifteen. Four, so. Check it lower up to thirty years. So if all three years are meant. Stand, I'm getting ahead, so. Then it would. Overbore. But anyway, that's a four, no special session. Does that even be called?
Yes.
If.
Okay, uh, I need a motion to certify the. Tax rate collection.
Okay, motion.
Motion made by Commissioner White. Let me just. Second by Commissioner Fonda, all in favor?
Aha.
All against? All right, item number fifteen. Discussing of appropriate except modified interlocal cooperation agreement and contract between the Burke Center and Newton County. Basically what it, uh. They're modifying the interlocal agreement because Jasper County pulled out of. Uh, Burke Center and went with. Uh, spindle top, so Newton County, the agreement is, had Jasper County in it. Well, basically they took Jasper County out, so. Uh, we need to approve the next, the new interlocal agreement.
So are they still coming to Newton?
Yes, and they have, uh. They're gonna be going into Dr. Bussey's old office, so they will be. Opening a office here in basically a port service clinic. Couple days a week in the Dr. Bussey's old office. Motion made by Commissioner Fonda.
I second.
Second by Commissioner Powell, all in favor?
Aha.
All against? All right, item number sixteen, discussing of appropriate, except being submitted by Risk Services of Louisiana. And approved payment in amount of four hundred and forty-nine thousand, seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars and fifteen cents for the property insurance. This is basically the property insurance that, uh, we've been hashing over. Uh, there's the payment in full for the full four hundred and forty-nine thousand. Seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars and fifteen cents. Need approval to pay it. Where are you gonna get this fund? We actually do have the money, uh, we're pulling it out of, we. We approved a hundred and eighty, what was that, eighty-five for the first payment. You know, with the last, uh. Agreed court. So then we didn't want to do the finance agreement, so. On the rest of the money out of the enterprise fund and. Huh? Yes, in the unbudgeted case, so we're pulling it out of there.
Bottom line, we gotta have insurance.
So we either, we either pay it or we don't have insurance.
I'll make the motion to pay the four hundred and forty-nine thousand. I second.
Motion made by Commissioner Powell. Second by Commissioner White, all in favor?
Aha.
All against? All right. All right, item number seventeen is discuss. And if appropriate, approve public road easement between USA, USDA Forest Service and Newton County. This easement is thirty-six wide, foot wide and sixteen hundred and sixty-seven foot long. And covers approximately one point three eight acres in the Sabine National Forest. On County Road twenty-one seventy-eight, and which was approved August sixth. August sixteenth, twenty twenty-two. It's in precinct three. Uh. It's Commissioner Fonda. So basically, y'all approved the county road. Uh.
My question is, how did they get a road built without people? They had an easement.
They had an easement?
They had it. Red Watson had the easement.
Okay, so.
And it was, uh. Well, no, Marie, the lady named Marie had an easement in there to that piece of property.
Okay, so this is county road?
Yes.
We had to get the easement from Forest Service?
Oh, yes. Well, no, I had to get it from, uh, yes, basically from the forest service. And this was, I thought this was in step. Uh. Sent a request to make it a county road. But apparently they come back with something else. I, the way it reads or the way I read it is, is almost like they think that they don't have. Right away in there with it being a county road. It uses them right away in there regardless. But I think they just wanted on a piece of paper saying that they do. If something happens up there. And they still have an easement into that piece of property, down that road.
Okay.
That's all it is. And I thought we had took care of it back. They sent us so many papers to fill out. I thought we had already done it, but it sounded we missed it. But anyway, it is, it is dedicated as a county road.
Yes, I, I did see it was dedicated and it was approved.
Yeah.
Uh, August sixteenth, twenty twenty-two.
And that's going in there to a ten-acre track. As far as I'm, as far as I know, that's the last. Piece of property owned the south, owned the Lakewood Lake that can be, uh. That's been purchased. That they're actually gonna be a home zone, that's actually the fastest lake.
Okay, so when I first got it, I, it was, the easement was made out from the Newton County judge.
Yeah.
I didn't want to sign it until it was changed.
But anyway, I hope this is the final step. I hope this is, I hope this is the final step. But we made it a county road. You don't need.
Really, they don't.
No, they don't. I just think they did, I think that's just probably something that the fire service does. Just because everything else around it is. They own everything else around it. There's two roads going in there, twenty-one sixty-eight and this road here. There's this and that turns off twenty-one sixty-eight. Yeah, I read, I read that contract is basically. Don't tear a sign up, don't do anything or, you know. And this is gonna allow them to put, uh, with us doing this, that's gonna allow them to put their signs up also. I think that's a big deal. I think they want to go in and put some signs up on. Side of that road and going in. So I don't have a problem with that. Roads built, though, bring it to. The, 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 the forest service engineered the road. Engineered it and inspected it as it was being built. It is built to the forest service. Which is basically built better than our textile highways.
Okay, so I need a, a motion to, uh. Approve public road easement between USC Forest Service and Newton County.
I make that motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Fonda.
I second.
Second by Commissioner White.
Mm-hmm.
All in favor?
Aha.
All against? All right. Item number eighteen. Discussing of appropriate approve twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four renewal notice. And benefit confirmation between Tac Health and Employee Benefits Board. And Newton County for medical, dental, vision and life insurance. And that's Ms. Ginger.
This is just time, that time for years for the more insurance. And if y'all approved it. Went up seventy-five dollars. Employees paying their. Half of it. But I need to know if y'all wanted to go with the new rate. It's safe to be built to take the same, or they said the same. I don't know, I would say the same for each employee.
Okay, how much per, uh, employee, uh, did, for the county, did it go up?
I think it was like twenty-one dollars for, uh, employee child. It's like twenty-one dollars for the employee. It goes up for child. Boy, that's short.
Okay, I was just like the county's portion. The county's portion.
No, it's county's portion for employee of them seventy-five dollars.
Okay.
Right, was nine forty-nine twenty open. And then. The rate is one thousand twenty-five dollars.
Okay.
The dental insurance goes and, and the. Vision goes down, the county doesn't pay the vision, the voice pay the vision. So it was last six.
Okay.
I'd say it right here, it's, uh.
Y'all probably have one.
There you go.
Okay, yeah, I'm sorry, it's, it's right here in front of me.
Yeah.
So. So, uh.
There are other options. Out there. But it would be. Just. Just the last for the county, but on the boy side, it would make the death toll still up. Probably still up. And by the way, it's. You also need to pay laser. We don't owe them much as it is now, but I know they're in the horse yet.
Yes.
But to me, this is part of my style. And I've got cancer and it's really helped for me having the.
So. Um. Does anybody have any questions on? So.
I'm beginning to probably use your. So.
I'm going to.
Okay. Four thousand, it's just off the top of my. Full time employees.
How was that?
A hundred. Do you take the aggressive for lots or advice a little bit?
Thank you. Judge, I make the motion that we approve. Benefits package. As Ms. Sims suggested. I'm a pro players, ladies and gentlemen.
Okay, motion is, um, made by Commissioner Powell to approve the renewal notice. Um. For the health and employee benefits board.
Second.
Second made by Commissioner Fonda, all in favor?
Aha.
All against?
I just need you to sign, initial this, this, you're going.
Okay. This initial.
Right there. Right there, flip it over to the next page.
Okay.
There's some more. There's a signature page. All. This one, you might have to do this. Day. Mission.
All right. I'm on. You're up for item number nineteen.
Yeah.
Uh.
I want to do. Basically, what happened for avoiding period.
Oh, right.
Yeah.
I miss.
I'll get y'all a coffee.
Okay. Thank you. All right, item number nineteen is discussing of appropriate. To approve retirement plan assessment. For plan year twenty twenty-four between Texas. County District Retirement System and Newton County.
We spoke with Raul, which is our representative of the city for our. Area. And currently, the county matches. Eight point six. And they're elected by the. Seven. Percent. And he said if we let it, if they. Live it like that for other more years. If everybody was tired, retired. Then, you know, we'd be. So we're in this shape.
Okay, looking at the funding, the county is, um. Yes, it's. All right, we're at ninety-five point nine percent funded. For anticipated benefits, so we're actually doing pretty good on it.
Yeah, correct.
At the rate we're, we're doing. So. Uh. I need a motion to. Uh, approve the retirement plan assessment for. Plan year twenty twenty-four.
I make the motion that we approve the retirement.
Have a question.
Yeah.
Oh, make the motion that we approve the retirement.
Okay, motion is made by Commissioner Powell.
Second.
Second by Commissioner White. All in favor?
Aha.
Uh. All against? Item number twenty, discussing of appropriate extended COVID-nineteen disaster declaration. Until September twelfth, twenty twenty-three. Uh, that's just. Um. In case something comes up, they want us to keep extending the disaster declarations. I get motion, motion is made by Commissioner Fonda.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Benson, all in favor?
Aha.
All against? All right, and. Item number twenty-two is payment of the bill. November twenty-one.
Twenty-one.
Oh, I, I missed, discussing of appropriate extend hurricane lower disaster declaration.
Okay. Motion.
Motion is made by Commissioner Benson.
Second.
Uh, second by Commissioner Benson, motion made by Commissioner White. All in favor?
Aha.
All against? All right, item number twenty-two is payment of the bill.
Two hundred and three thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven dollars and thirty cents. It's also included to the remainder of eighty-one. This is Tony State Fund, eight dollars and fifty cents. Road and Ridge General, forty-six thousand, two dollars and eighty-six cents. Road and Ridge Precinct One, I think I'll post the seven cents. Road and Ridge Precinct Two, two hundred and eighty-three dollars and twenty-two cents. Road and Ridge Precinct Three, two hundred and twenty-nine dollars and go to five cents. First two, four, four hundred thousand, seven hundred and twenty-six dollars and eighty cents. The A W three, fifty-four dollars and seventy. Mission Special Precinct One, one thousand, two hundred and fifty-two cents. Mission Special Precinct Two, fifteen thousand, nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars and thirty-six cents. Mission Special Precinct Three, four thousand, seven hundred and eighteen cents. Mission Special Precinct Four, two thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars and eighty cents. Dedicated road. Dedicated Road Precinct Three, seventeen thousand, four hundred and seventy-seven dollars and fifty-two cents. Dedicated Road Precinct Four, one thousand fifty-four dollars. Record preservation, twenty-four dollars and forty-four cents. Solid light deposit, one hundred fifty-two dollars and seventy-seven cents. Road registration, thirty-nine health, one hundred and ninety-four cents. Newton County Lot, thirty-two hundred fifty-two dollars and fifty-eight cents. Storage lot, thirty, thirty-seven dollars. District Attorney, one thousand thirty-seven dollars. And the more spend, we have a week, there's not too much. But for all of them, five hundred seventy-five dollars, three hundred and twenty-two dollars. Any questions?
And almost two hundred and twenty-something thousand for the, uh, your balance on the insurance?
Yes. It's different for you in the break.
Yeah, okay.
Thanks for getting that out.
But I do have, uh, as a limit, the utility bills, they come in like this form, we receive all. X amount of days, fifteen days. The only way we can give them anytime is if we have the morning up. It'll be, it's a month. Uh, I heard you said, thanks for getting them in on the utilities. Best of all. Like I said, it's once a month.
Tell me when I get to make the motion.
Hmm?
You tell me when I can make.
All right, I need a motion to approve the bills.
I make it.
I need. A motion made by Commissioner Benson, second by Commissioner White. And I need a motion to. I'm sorry.
Aha.
On item number fifteen, with the available agreement. And I was reviewing it, and there's a third in it that's maybe kind of original. But on the second page of it, it seems well.
What's that in last thing here? Uh, law agreement corporate. First. Or did I give it back to you?
Hang on, let us find it, Gordon. Thought I handed it back to you, I'm not sure though.
I know you're. It's better now than never.
Yes, so.
Get the chance to read it now than ever.
Okay, item, page number two.
Page two, second. It's the second paragraph right here, and now therefore, and it lists the counties that are gonna be in Cleveland, it doesn't list Newton County.
Okay, I missed it. Okay, so we need to get, uh, we need to get that typo fixed before we, uh, so item number fifteen, I guess we need to go back and table it till we get Newton County added.
Where's that at?
Have to reset.
We have page two.
On page two.
The second paragraph, it starts with now therefore, and it lists, um.
Angelina Houston, Nacogdoches, Holt, Sabines, and Augustine. Yeah, well, you said the Senator Trinity and Tyler, they left, they left, uh, they took Jasper out, but they also took Newton out too, so we need to. Yeah, we need to get them to resend it. So, uh, what do we do on this, resend our, our vote? To approve and, uh.
I think so, I think go back to that bottom, and. I think what you said. You did have our thing, it's the motion. Go through the minutes, and the original motion was, I think, have to go back and. I think they want to, like, I think they want to go back and just pass and not take any action on it. They come back and be, prove it once it's directed. So I think, um, probably take them, accept the motion. Send the previous action on item number fifteen.
Okay. And then table it till, uh, interlocal agreement is amended. So on item number fifteen, we're gonna go back and revisit it. We're gonna.
I second. Can you? But I make the. She said Mr. Fonda did, and now second it. So can you make the motion to take the action?
Yeah.
Amended or? You gonna, so we're just, just gonna, uh, no action, or we're gonna?
Resend, resend the, uh, approve. Previous motion. And then, table it till interlocal agreement is amended and include Newton County.
Okay, then, I make it, I make it motion.
All right, motion is made by Commissioner Fonda. Second, second by Commissioner Powell, all in favor? All against? All right.
Thank, thank you catching that.
Thank you.
Good catch. Good catch. I got that when you looked at that contract.
Now we go into.
Five minutes ago.
Now we're going to, Rachel Benson.
I make the motion that we adjourn.
I need a second.
He's almost second.
I'll second that, folks. I get the second one. All in favor? All again? Oh, yeah, at two o'clock, we're having, um,
Hello.
Hello?
Need work job.
Like we're all over here. I do too.
Here's the whole thing.
Are you, sir?
Right, listen.
How you doing?
He dug in, didn't he? You think he dug in?
Yeah, well.
Who did you tell me?
One thing about him, I say this, I go, I thought he.
Commissioner Fonda, Andrew Harmon, Inspector General Handoff.
Oh, okay.
Since I'll be in, doing some today, but. Yes, sir, good to see you guys. Know you had some, uh, questions about that improper radio project that, uh, has got going on. That's through us, it, we're hoping.